Okay, folks, I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of February 18, 2020, to order with a moment of silent meditation and sleep.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for whose sake it is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consent agenda approved, Town Council meeting minutes of February 3, 2020, special Town Council meeting minutes of January 27, 2020. Accept the January 27, 2020 transcript as the record of the hearing regarding Atlantic Solar LLC and Atlantic Control Systems, Inc., Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Zoning Ordinance Amendment. Accept the following monthly financial activity report, Town Clerk.
Can I pull off February 3 and the Town Council meeting minutes of January 27? Motion to approve the measure of the consent agenda.
Motion made at second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, silly, what page?
February 3 is page 2. And all I wanted to point out under the top, under consent agenda, where it says opposed, and it just says before this. I don't remember how I voted, I don't know. It's very possible that I voted for the consent or I could have abstained, I'm not sure. I'm not sure on that one.
So we want to review the tape?
Yeah, I guess you'll have to.
So pull them and put them back before you're on.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
You also said you would approve.
Just because, just so I could abstain. That's all.
That's another one we'll take a look at.
So I move that we approve the Town Council meeting minutes of January 27.
Second. Okay, motion made at second, all those in favor? Aye.
And I'll abstain.
So please abstain, yeah. Okay.
And move that we approve the, oh, we're not going to approve.
Sorry, we're being kind. All right. First, public forum, anything on the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. Intro. Intro. I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burdick. Phil, you have the intro.
Thank you. Florence, yes. It's a real pleasure for me to introduce our newest Town employee, Phil Burdick, from the Department of Public Works. Phil is a longtime Hopkinton resident who just recently moved to Valentine, Connecticut. He's a graduate of Charroon High School, 2008. He has a Class A CDL license and licenses to operate heavy equipment and machinery over there at DPW. In addition to that, he's got a lot of experience for working from municipalities throughout the state, plowing snow during the winter months. He started on February 3, and the good news is he's still here.
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Phil Burdick. The town area is set, I grow up in South County. I look forward to starting the town for the years to come.
Thank you.
I met him, he was in my interview.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I'm not sure how many Burdicks are all related, but I knew Grandma Burdick from Fairview Avenue. Was that your great-grandmother?
No, we're all related somewhere.
Somewhere, but that wasn't your grandma, your great-grandma.
Wesley Burdick.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome, be safe, be safe. Thank you. First public forum, anything on the agenda? Anyone who wishes to be heard, yes, Charles.
David, make sure he realizes where I left.
Not his room. We're trying, so excuse us. Joe Moreau, Old Dean Moreau. I just want to talk about an issue. I want to start off by saying it has no reflection on the Town Council. It's concerning the project on Chase Hill Road. I was hoping that the attorney was here. It was first heard November 25th, it was continued to December 9th, continued to January 13th, continued to February 18th. In fact, it was tonight, we were supposed to hear that. The application was date stamped January 9, 2019. At that hearing at the elementary school when I looked at the minutes of the meeting, Barbara had a question, and I had a question about the same thing, about the placement of the electrical and the inverters and the pads, so there were a lot of questions about that. And the attorney said he would have electrical expert, or interconnective expert, at the next meeting. He also said he would provide binders for the brothers so that they could be up to speed. The next meeting on December 9, there wasn't any expert, as we know, and weren't any binders provided. He did ask, and I haven't confirmed this, mine, I was told there were three residents that asked to, gave him the email address and asked for that information, which he volunteered to do that. I don't know if that happened with the next two. The next meeting, the date agreed to, was January 13. There was one of the brothers that did receive the email, and they received it on January 9 from the attorney. That meeting was postponed for January 13. And according to our council member told me, that they said they had a legitimate reason for postponing that meeting. On January 21, the meeting was rescheduled to February 18, tonight. And it was agreed to by the attorney. So it was almost a month ago, from January 21 to tonight, that he stood here and agreed to that meeting. And that was postponed because of scheduling conflict. So he knew almost a month about the scheduling issue. What was concerning to me, I just, recently, and I confirmed it today with Marita, council member told me that typically what will happen is, they'll get an email, the town will get an email that they need to postpone the meeting. And again, I wish the attorney was here, because I would have thrown. Not even the decency of a phone call to say, "I have an issue with this problem." Just send the town an email and postpone that meeting. Minutes of the meeting on December 9, and I'm just quoting this, "Council President Lindolfi advised that in light of some of the brothers wishing to receive material regarding the project from the applicant's attorney, the email, and Council of Alvo wishing to hear from the mechanical connecting expert, they would continue the hearing." Again, there were two hearings that were agreed to by the attorney, and both were postponed. What happens is, I have to call residents and let them know that that meeting was postponed. When I found out what the next scheduled date is, I made additional phone calls to let them know, "Here's the date for the next meeting." You know, and I've done that twice now, to let them know, "Well, the meeting's this date, or sorry, it's postponed." And most times, it's last minute. For a couple to get the email with the required information on Thursday, and then they postpone their meeting on that Monday. In my opinion, the hearing should have been closed a couple of months ago. If the attorney, and again, it's no fault of the council, please, if the attorney did what he said he was going to do, this hearing could have been closed a couple of months ago. Most times, you've heard enough information where council members have information to make their own mind, have a decision by that point. I've raised this issue a couple of times since 2018, with some of these developers just postponing these meetings. You know, I've been told that the town needs to give these projects a reasonable amount of time, and I agree with that. These developers need a reasonable amount of time. But when you look at the application date stamped January 9, and here we are, 13 months later, I think it's past the point of being a reasonable amount of time. And then to postpone those two meetings in the fashion that it did, I believe that the council needs to set a final hearing date and to close the hearing. Of course, now it puts the residents and the council in a bad position, because you're trying to review the charitable school budget, you're trying to review the town's current budget, and work in extra time, getting all these things in, and we have the developer that is postponed, or an attorney, that has postponed two meetings. I don't think they've given us enough consideration, and Scott has mentioned it, and other people mentioned it several times. I don't feel that they've given us the respect that they should. To send an email to cancel a meeting, and I know that's what people do today, text an email, but call, give Frank the courtesy of a phone call and let him know, "Got a scheduling conflict." And when Marita finds out, then an email. It's just, I don't know how we can stop this now. My other concern is, I was hoping he was here, so that we were going to set a date for that meeting, and he's not here, so I don't know how long this is going to drag on. I noticed in the agenda that it says about a re-notification of the residents, the certified mail process, it's additional work for Lisa and the staff and the town employees to go through. I mean, I realize it's at their expense, but, you know, I think we should start charging them for the time that our employees have to go through this, extra mailing. I've heard people up there saying, "I agree with it, enough is enough with this." I guess my question is, and you probably can't answer it, is, how is he going to schedule another hearing? Is he going to have to wait for the next Town Council meeting?
Will you be here when we get to the agenda? You're not leaving, are you?
No.
Good, then we can answer these questions tonight. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for the agenda items? Okay, thank you. Next up, under my report, just a couple items, the ongoing charitable budget. I think we're about $108,000 above the 4% mark, so we need some further cuts, otherwise we have to petition the Order of General. I'm not of that opinion to do that. So my opinion, the fund balance discussion that they've continually avoided, as Sharon knows full well, I know full well, and Barbara perhaps knows full well, they need to reduce that. I think right now, it's just under 3%. If they'd move it down to 2.5%, I'd be fine with that. It should give us enough room to stay at 4% or less, as far as the tax increase. And I'm going to be working hard on the email to the school committee members, and I suggest to anyone else, if they need any talking points on that issue, you can certainly call me, and I'll give you the exact numbers. But they need to reduce that, and they purposely avoided the issue. And it's very frustrating.
So when I left at 10, did they ever address it at all that night?
Dave Stahl did. He added, he made a motion for, I think it was $297,000, something like that, which would have been roughly the half percent from 3 to 2.5, and he added two proportions of the school budget that they left in.
Right, right, right.
But that did not get approved. So his motion was seconded, perhaps for discussion purposes, I forget, and it was not acted on. Well, you needed six, that night, you needed six to win over the vote, and I think they may have gotten four. It was Dave Stahl, George Abbott, actually, the Chair, Ryan Callahan, I was very surprised, he supported it, and then Clay Johnson from Richmond. He's a pretty fiscal conservative, so.
So they went away till the 20th, is it the 20th?
Yeah, I forget when the next one is. So, you know, I'm going to, again, keep up my email campaign and pressure, and again, just so everyone knows, when we recessed, I did go up to Catherine Juice because that was her idea, going from 3 to 2.5. And then she skips over it when it's on the agenda item. So I basically told her, "That was your idea, to go from 3 to 2.5, and you really need to support this reduction." And I expect her to support it, so. I'll keep up, and hopefully anyone else can keep the pressure on Lisa Macaluso and Catherine Juice. And again, if you need any talking points, call me, and I'll be glad to give you the information to relay to them. That's important.
Yeah, and the entire increase that we're looking at, whether it goes to 4% or not, the entire increase, all that 4% is all Chair, it was all school.
Right, as it usually is.
Yeah, but you know, the most fun thing to remember was that, that maintenance of effort law, so once you adopt that, that means the next year. Yeah, so I said, and I haven't gone into these meetings, but, because my position is that outside management study, and I believe we should reject the charitable school budget. You know, at some point in time, the school committee has to realize that most of the town taxes goes to the schools. And the towns have been very generous with charitable through the years, and the town has bills to pay, as well as the people who pay the property taxes to benefit the school district, as well as their individual towns. And until that is really absorbed by the school committee collectively, we're going to continually have problems. It's like, we just said, Frank, the fact is that it's going to be permanently in there. And this town has things they want to do in the future, and other towns do, and we're very generous with our school district. And somehow, we have to really have the school committee appreciate this, not only this year, but into the future. Because regardless of who sits on that Town Council, what's going to happen is that the hens will come to roost more in the future if we don't really change our attitude about school budgets and, you know, impact on the towns, as well as the individual taxpayers.
Yeah, sure. I have a question. If they can, after the budget is passed, if they can move money among line items, then why do we have to stick to the maintenance of effort? Why can't they actually go down here?
The maintenance of effort, though, is.
Then we absolutely need the management staff, that's.
Well, this is the deal. It has been part of politics for decades. The fact of the matter is, the management study would identify, like these new employees they hire, whether they were needed or not, I can't debate that. What I'm saying is, if you had an outside management study, it would identify certain areas that they could save money. And labor is the biggest impact in any budget. Then you have, they have the flexibility of moving line items around, so they have that ability built in, even after the budget is adopted. So it's very tough to be sympathetic to them when they have all these benefits that the Town Council doesn't have at their disposal. Plus, you also add in the fact that since charitable's not a single member of the school district, like Wesley, they're not even accountable to the Town Council for the extent. And so I think, what disappoints me is that, it's my understanding, because the council president told me this, but I think I actually saw it in the paper, the Charleston Council actually tabled a request for the outside management study in that. And you know, I know there's stress among the three towns, but logically, logically, why would you be against an outside management study? You know, the problem with Charleston is they have this obsession that we want an equalized act, and that's why they won't open up the charitable act.
We know that, but that's an entitlement to be discussed, and we have to be on the agenda, but if you wish to discuss that.
No, I just put that up, and that has my annual ramifications, so.
Yeah, I just, I just.
We know that, we've been working on it. Sharon, Frank and I go to these meetings, we look at the budget line by line, we make requests line by line, not just generically, not just in a political way, we do it in real numbers, real time, real existence at the meeting, discussing with these people. So we are quite aware of it. And if we really need to discuss this as a major topic that you would like, then let's make it an agenda item, and then make it a discussion. This is under President's report.
Anyway, okay.
So the maintenance of effort, simply, there is a law, but basically, if the budget went down, they're not going to go below that number, and that number is usually the last year. Current year is expenses.
Plus all the extra children.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, but they're not in the year then anyway. They'd have to cut a couple more million to get down the maintenance of effort, so that doesn't even come up.
And once they go below that, it's a dollar to dollar, they don't get state aid or federally Medicaid or state aid. They lose a dollar to dollar that below, the amount that below the maintenance of effort.
And the other thing is that, one of the things you delete from the maintenance of effort is non-recurring expenses, like if they bought a pickup truck or a generator or something, something you don't buy every year, that would be deleted from the maintenance of effort, because it's a non-recurring expense.
And then, you know, last item on my report, Dave Stahl, that meeting was great. You know, he made his first motion to reduce the fund balance. It didn't carry over, it needed two more votes, but still, it was great to see him asking intelligent questions, and he was actively engaged, and you could tell he was prepared for the meeting. So I wish him the best, and I think we got a winner there, so.
Yeah, I.
It was very nice to see, so.
I spoke to Dave about applying the school committee vacancy, and he's intelligent, he's a man of strong convictions, and it's really a phenomenal appointment. I think as time goes by, I appreciate that even more than we already do at this moment.
Thanks. Okay, next up, under old business, please note that the resumption of the public hearing scheduled for this date will not resume the schedule due to the request of the attorney for the applicant regarding a request for an amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, and an amendment to the Hopkinton Zone Ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Suite T through W, Danover, Maryland, 21076, and Karen N. and James W. Shurenzia, Jr., 201 Chase Hill Road, Ashway Round, for property located at Chase Hill Road, identified as Platte 2 Lot 32, an RF 480 zone, and had been continued from December 9, 2019, to January 13, 2020, which itself was canceled at the prior request of the applicant's attorney's statement.
Could I ask for a legal opinion before we, it's probably all agree we have a problem.
Go ahead.
The legal thing I was going to ask Kevin was, you know, he's helped with us in the past with something that we couldn't get going, and he recommended 90 days. I think we probably agree that this is the last time where we're going to want to continue this. This is it?
Well, it depends legally, I guess what we can.
Yeah, so that's why I would ask, I'd like to see us, you know, stop these sort of things. In other words, you can't keep going on and on, and this is the last, this would be the last time that they can ask for rescheduling. Legally, how would you suggest we go about that?
Well, we can do, I have to think out on my feet here, what, I recommend you select a date that's at least a month out from now, first of all, because that by itself should make it less likely that he requests another continuance. So it's more likely there will be a conflict if you go two weeks from now, for example. So I'd make that recommendation. I think we could put language in there, that absent documented good cause to be brought to the council's attention, there will be no.
But do we have to do absent cause?
Yeah, you do, you do, because there are things that happen in everybody's life that.
So there's no way we can say this is it, then?
You can't, you can make it very clear that they're going to, he's going to have to come in here and explain, and we may or may not give him the continuance or portion to go forward. I think that's the best you can do. The bad part of that is that a bunch of people might be coming out, and then find out the meeting doesn't go forward. But I think you have to give him notice that there will not be a continuance without good cause, that's clearly articulated. For example, if he said he was going, God forbid, he was scheduled to go into some major surgery, I think it's unreasonable to just say no under those circumstances, but we just don't know what facts might develop, and it's just kind of a tricky thing. Because the statutory process has been triggered, and the public hearing is underway, you just can't close a public hearing.
Well, here's his letter, dated February 7. Dear Counselors, unfortunately, a personal conflict has come up for me on the 18th, so we knew this on the 7, but he couldn't come on the 18th, which prevents me from being able to attend the meeting of the Town Council in order to finalize the presentation of the Shurenzia Chase Hill Road rezone application. A personal conflict.
Well, and what I'm suggesting is, the language I'm using is exactly to your point, that that's not good.
Thank you.
And so that's what the motion, when I say for good cause shown and articulated, you can't just make a generalization of that.
But, I mean, is there no penalty for, if he doesn't show good cause, do we still have to give him another day?
Well, I think we give him 30, well, probably we do March 16, which is just about 30 days, and at that meeting, if he doesn't show, then.
We can make them, but can we make a motion to close? The only reason why I'm, like, sitting here calming is because we have not given the veterans a chance to have their part of the hearing.
Oh, we did, we heard it, the minutes were.
So is, this was only continued because of your one question?
It was interconnection expert.
Yeah, interconnection.
All right, so I have a question for you. Do you really need to know that information yet?
Yes, it has to, interconnection has to do with the road, the transformers, converters, where they are, what they're planning to do on the road, in and out, and.
Okay.
Because it's sound, it's.
All right.
It really is important to know what they're planning on doing, because one way, it is terribly.
Is there a way for you, is there a way for him to have that expert come, even if he can't, even if the lawyer can't?
You'd have to get an other lawyer, come on.
Well, how about I try and.
I want to do a walkthrough, sight visit, too. I was going to ask him tonight if he was here, when I could do that, but that doesn't really, I can do that on the weekend.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's not going to hold it off.
All right, how about we do this motion, I move that we set a date, place and time, for resumption of the public hearing for.
March 16?
For the Centrica Business Solutions.
That's the month, the second meeting in March.
Chase Hill Road, and that the Town Council will not entertain another continuance without showing good cause for any continuance.
Is that good cause and well-articulated?
Well, what else do I have to say, well-articulated?
Or just articulated cause. Just put articulated in there somewhere.
Show good cause.
And articulated good cause.
With, okay, fine, without showing good articulated.
Articulated good cause.
Articulated good cause, thank you, for another continuance.
Did you agree on that date as part of the motion?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I just said that we'd set a date, so then we, I returned to Lisa. So that's my motion, and then.
Second.
Okay, and now we can ask Lisa what would be the date a month from now.
March 16, so the second meeting in March.
That's, that's.
That would give us.
There's an meeting going on, no other hearings that night?
No, I think you're, have a decision on March 2 for another matter.
Okay.
Okay, that legally is not going to be part of the motion, is it?
No, 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 no.
No, second thing, which we have. All right, so a motion is made at second.
And you don't need a motion that they have to, they have to be public advertising, you know, written notes, you don't need another motion for all of that, do you?
No, as long as, as long as that's understood, that's included in this, yeah.
Well, I didn't include that as part of my motion.
Oh, you just did.
Oh, okay, so the motion's quite a, you don't get. It's quite a lengthy motion. Is that okay with the second? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion made at second, okay. Anyone, Joey, you had a question on this?
Yeah, I just had a question. Since the handup seems to be, and I agree, Barbara's question, if this expert cannot show up on the 16, is it possible that Barbara could be in contact with this expert on the phone, email to answer her questions?
That's not, no, that's not, this testimony has to occur in public.
In public.
Before the public, otherwise it violates the open meeting law, and it can't be a factor in the council's deliberations, so you've got to do it the right way.
We may receive some ancillary benefits from the interconnection expert, too, so. Okay, all right, so a motion was made at second. Any further counsel discussion? I've been heard enough, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Last public forum, anything not on the agenda? That anyone wishes to pull up?
Mr. President, I'd like to leave that reading in memory of Richard N. Johansson.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you. Good night.
Kevin?